I'd call me into working with these staff running the petition in the United States. Bless my heart. Heavenly Father, just give you thanks for this day. I give you thanks for the -- that we can gather together, we can assemble, that we can speak, that we live in this great country. And Father, I lift up those who have served to protect and continue to serve, and I lift up their families. Those that are overseas, I especially lift them up in this season and be with each and everyone. Father, give thanks for those who are here, elected officials who choose to serve, those who stand on the floor of the arena, who strive to make a difference. Father, lift up each and pray for -- thanks for each of our department heads. Again, I give thanks for their willingness to serve and be with them and their passion and their desires. Father, lift up each of our employees and ask for your protection and your hands to be placed over them, keep them safe. Father, to our community, continue your blessings. Father, just pray for your strength, your guidance, and your wisdom for each and every one as we go through tonight, but not just tonight, but every step into the future, to make a difference. We give you thanks for your sign in this season that we enjoy and that we look at the wonder, the wonder of Christmas, all these things in your son's name. Amen.
How pleasure to witness the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing I want to do is to present to Alderman David Moore a key to our city for over thirty years. Talking about being on the floor of the arena, buddy. Thank you, David.
Mayor Nelson, for the past twelve years, you've given your life to the city of Van Buren, and you've given city of Van Buren unconditional love, you and Terry both. You've had some great accomplishments, second to none, and we appreciate so much the twelve years that you've given to this city. On behalf of the city council, the city employees, and the entire community, I know you've had the key to the city for the last twelve years, but now you're going to have one to take home with you. And this reads, "This key to the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, is hereby presented to Mayor Bob Freeman in appreciation for his twelve years of outstanding leadership and dedicated service to the city. Hereby presented this seventh key day of December twenty eighteen." Thank you so much.
Council member, real quick?
Sure.
If there are photos, council members, if you'll come around, Mayor Freeman.
I saw Alan, I know his identity thing. We'll wait about fifteen minutes for my [inaudible]. Smile. Okay. One, two, three. Here, one, two, three. One more. All right. Got it. Thank you. Dave. last month's regular meeting, November twenty-six, twenty eighteen, asks if there are any corrections, those minutes that have been published. If not, entertain a motion to approve for so moved, there's a second. All those favor, signature by saying aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, excuse me, I've had to, we've had to make one change to the agenda, and that's adding a resolution, and that would be a resolution three A, having to do with signature cards for the change. So the next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting proposed budget for twenty nineteen, asks the clerk please read that resolution in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution adopting a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, two thousand nineteen, proposes expenditures of sixteen million eighty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars, sixteen million eighty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars is hereby appropriated, and a copy of said budget is attached hereto and made a part hereof. Section two, the appropriations made herein include additional pay for holidays for all agents, servants, and employees of the city of Van Buren, including but not limited to uniformed employees as provided for by the laws of the state of Arkansas.
This is the same budget that you provided at last month's meeting, and as it said then, the only major changes had to do with the addition of the school resource officers, a little bit of the retirement area that we knew was changing. This will give a start to Mayor Hearst when he begins, because it has to be in place by February, so there'll be a budget in place, and council and American make any adjustments as they seem need to going forward, but it gives him a starting point. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, there's a second.
Second.
Go ahead and call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Eyes have a vote six-four-zero against, that'll be resolution number?
One-two dash one dash two-zero-one-eight.
Resolution number one-two dash one dash two-zero-one-eight. Thank you. Okay, item three A, this is a, the new item, is a resolution regarding signature cards, and I ask clerk please read that resolution in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution relating to signature cards for the city of Van Buren, whereas Mayor Bob Freeman will be leaving his position effective December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, and whereas Mayor-elect Joe Hearst will be sworn in to the position of mayor effective January one, two thousand nineteen, and whereas it is necessary to authorize signatures of certain individuals to draw vouchers on funds deposited in various banks by the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and whereas it is also necessary to authorize signatures of certain individuals for entry into safety deposit box or boxes now leased by the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, or leased by them in the future. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, effective January one, two thousand nineteen, that said bank or banks are hereby authorized to pay out funds on deposits with them from time to time to be credited to the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, upon vouchers drawn upon said banks and signed by any combination of the following two persons, Mayor Joe Hearst, City Clerk Treasurer Phyllis Thomas, Administrative Assistant Jennifer Fraut, or Deputy City Clerk Connie Hyatt. Section two, effective upon passage of this resolution, the said bank or banks are authorized to allow into safety deposit box boxes now in the name of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, by the Mayor Joe Hearst, or the City Clerk Treasurer Phyllis Thomas, or Administrative Assistant Jennifer Fraut, or Deputy City Clerk Connie Hyatt, or by any one of them. Section three, Mayor Joe Hearst, City Clerk Treasurer Phyllis Thomas, Administrative Assistant Jennifer Fraut, and Deputy City Clerk Connie Hyatt are authorized and directed to sign signature cards which each of the banks to carry out the purposes of this resolution. Section four, the City Clerk Treasurer is directed to furnish a copy of this resolution under the seal of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, to each of the banks with which the city has or will have depository arrangements and/or safety deposit boxes.
Any questions? You have a motion to approve, there's a second?
Aye.
Second. Go ahead and call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Eyes have a vote six-four-zero against, that'll be resolution number?
One-two dash two dash two-zero-one-eight.
Resolution number one-two dash two dash two-zero-one-eight. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance, and it's to approve purchase of new police vehicles, ask clerk please read that ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council, the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of new vehicles for the police department for the appropriation of funds declaring an emergency and for other purposes, whereas the city of Van Buren is in need of certain police vehicles for the safety of life and protection of property of the city of Van Buren Police Department, and whereas after extensive research and inquiry, the city of Van Buren Police Chief has determined that the purchase of the vehicles from Breeden Truck Center of Van Buren, Arkansas, and Superior Fleet and Commercial Sales of Salons Springs, Arkansas, at the two thousand nineteen state purchase price would be the most practical, feasible, and cost-effective method for the department, and whereas the city council has determined pursuant to ACA fourteen dash fifty-eight dash three-zero-three B two B that exceptional circumstances exist which render the competitive bidding process to not be practical or feasible, and whereas a state of emergency exists because the vehicle will be provided improved life safety and protection of property and because the units are currently available. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the police department of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, is in immediate need to purchase two two thousand nineteen Chevrolet Traverse LS FWD and six two thousand nineteen Dodge Charger rear-wheel drive Panthostar vehicles. Section two, said two Chevrolet Traverse vehicles are authorized to be purchased from Superior Fleet and Commercial Sales located in Salons Springs, Arkansas, the total sum of forty-eight thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars as detailed in the attached quote. Section three, the said six Charger vehicles are authorized to be purchased from Breeden Truck Center located in Van Buren, Arkansas, with total sum of one hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars as detailed in the attached quote. Section four, the city council, in accordance with the terms of ACA fourteen dash fifty-eight dash three-zero-three B two B, hereby waste the requirement of competitive bidding and directs the mayor to purchase the above described for the price set forth in section two and section three above from capital improvement funds. Section five, it is further found that due to the immediate need to acquire this vehicle before the quote expires, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare, it shall take effect from and after its passage and approval. Section six, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized by the city council for the city of Van Buren to execute all documents, contracts, and agreements necessary to effectuate this ordinance. Section seven, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent the provisions heretofore are declared to be severable.
Do you have a motion to suspend the rules, go to a second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a second reading.
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of new vehicles for the police department for the appropriation of funds declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do you have a motion to further suspend the rules, go to a third and final reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize a contract for and purchase of new vehicles for the police department for the appropriation of funds declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I'll let she talk about the vehicles themselves and their use, keep handling. The two Traverse vehicles?
The two Traverse vehicles will be replacements for our current fleet. We've added some positions or some, I guess, positions inside the police department, and the requirement of those is, of course, having some vehicles for guys to move around the city in. That's what those, the two Traverses are. The six Dodge Chargers are for the school resource officer positions that we'll be adding in the spring. If you remember, we hired additional six officers recently, and they actually finished the police academy, and then when they finished their thirteen-week training that we released, at which time we assigned six, hopefully six SROs to the school district. Also, in the, part of the six that we're buying, the school district, they're going to pay us, reapairances for two of those Dodge Chargers, so I think they're twenty-three thousand, I think something like that, but yeah, they're going to pay us back for...
Forty-six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And that was quite a very agreement with the school district, they're paying the, paying for the salaries and benefits of the, of the resource officers when we equip and train those, with the exception of two of the vehicles they agreed to deploy, so I put a skilled school resource officer, every one of our schools.
Could you be a little more specific about the two new positions and the Traverse, and how that fits those positions?
Yes, actually, one of the SROs, supervisor, actually, we brought him out of the school, so he'll be the, he'll still be the resource, school resource officer supervisor, however, his office will be in the police department now, and he'll have other duties, such as internal affairs and some administrative duties. And then the other position that we created with some transfers, we created a position where we'll have a full-time public information officer, whereas before those duties were, he had PIO duties before, we also had duties relating to criminal investigations and other things, and so we're making that spot primarily by public information officer and also someone who is in charge of our training at the department for our officers. Obviously, the title will be officer development slash public information officer.
And those two positions are not new hires, those are just a reallocation of...
That's right, I'm sorry, yes.
Personnel that we already get.
Correct.
Okay, we have motion to approve, is there a second?
Aye.
Go ahead and call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to pass the emergency clause?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Eyes have it, my vote is six-four and zero against, and that'll be ordinance number?
Two-seven dash two-zero-one-eight.
Two-seven dash two-zero-one-eight. Want to back up real quick on this, on the pricing, because the question has been asked, and here's another example of, this was a state bid price for those Chargers, but Dodge, the local Dodge dealership was able to match that price, and so if we could match that price with the state, that's why we went with them. We had an add-on of the wiring harness, so we had to put that into that cost too, but still when you put those together, it's less than what the state bid is. So with that, we could, and then we would have to go to northwest Arkansas, and they matched the state bid on those. So it's a state bid or a match of that state bid, or equal or under. It makes it nice when a local dealership can match that state bid. Okay, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance to abandon easement in the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition, ask clerk please read that ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to abandon a portion of a utility and drainage easement in the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition inside the city of Van Buren, Crawford County, Arkansas, whereas a petition had been filed with the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas by Michael Kirk to abandon the utility and drainage easement along certain lots inside the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition, more particularly described as follows, description of existing fifteen-foot utility and drainage easement, all that portion of a certain fifteen-foot utility and drainage easement lying between lots sixty-five through sixty-six of the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition to the city of Van Buren, Crawford County, Arkansas, and whereas after due notice as required by law, the council has heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question of abandoning the easement in the herein above subdivision, and has ascertained that the easement herein above designated has therefore been dedicated to the public use as a public easement, and that the same has not been used for a period of more than five years preceding the state, and that the owners of the property abutting the easement to be abandoned have filed with the city council or have expressed their consent to abandonment, and the public interest and welfare are not adversely affected by abandoning the said easement, and whereas the city council of Van Buren acting under the authority of ACA fourteen dash one-ninety-nine dash one-zero-three and ACA fourteen dash three-oh-one dash three-oh-two has the authority to abandon easements or segments thereof. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the city of Van Buren, Arkansas hereby releases and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally, and into the utility and drainage easement specifically described above. Section two, a copy of this ordinance bearing original signatures and duly certified by the city clerk shall be filed in the miscellaneous records of the circuit clerk of Crawford County, Arkansas.
Do you have a motion to suspend the rules, go to a second reading?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait. All those favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a second reading.
An ordinance to abandon a portion of a utility and drainage easement in the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition inside the city of Van Buren, Crawford County, Arkansas.
Do you have a motion to further suspend the rules, go to a third and final reading?
Second.
All those favor, signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to abandon a portion of a utility and drainage easement in the Park Ridge at Lee Creek Edition inside the city of Van Buren, Crawford County, Arkansas.
This is the abandonment that we had on the agenda last month. Mr. Hearst?
It's been two, all utilities have signed off on it, sewer, water and sewer has, Wayne with the drainage easement, it's all been signed off on, so shouldn't have a problem.
Just a quick question. I understand that, you know, not using for utilities, but how do we, how does the water flow? How do we know it's not actually just naturally draining there, and therefore when you cut that off, you're creating a problem, you're maybe creating a problem?
Well, the water is just flowing natural ground, it's wooded area, large streams, and then it runs into a concrete ditch, I think it's two houses down.
Yeah. Six-four and sixty-five. I don't think we've created an issue, is it flowing? It's flowing naturally there.
It just sheets across the whole area behind those houses.
Everybody's, everybody's good with it.
I raised that issue with the planning commission, and they were satisfied, and I felt like they were educating that area as well.
I walked the property, checked overheads, mats, flats, and everything, and I can't foresee a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, a second? A second? Go ahead and call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Eyes have it, my vote is six-four-zero against, that's resolution, excuse me, ordinance number?
Two-eight dash two-zero-one-eight.
Ordinance number two-eight dash two-zero-one-eight. Next ordinance on the agenda is a ordinance to rezone certain property, ask clerk please read that ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash one-nine-six-three, Van Buren Municipal Code number fourteen dot oh-four dot oh-one, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes, whereas the city of Van Buren, Arkansas duly incorporated under the law of the state of Arkansas, all powers, authority, and duties of the city of the first class, and whereas the city of Van Buren has adopted the zoning ordinance for the city of Van Buren, ordinance number seven dash one-nine-six-three, and whereas a request has been made by Jose Hernandez to rezone certain property within the city limits of the city of Van Buren, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published in the press august on November seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, and a public hearing was conducted as required by law, ACA fourteen dash five-six dash four-two-two, on December fourth, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas as a result of this turn, the planning commission has recommended that certain property within the city limits of the city of Van Buren be rezoned from its previous classification to the following, current zoning C two, pure affair, commercial district, new zoning R three, multifamily residential district. Legal description, part of the east half of the northwest, northwest-southeast, section twelve, township nine north, range thirty-two west, Van Buren, Crawford County, Arkansas. Language description, parcel number seven-zero-zero dash zero-eight-eight-nine-five dash zero-zero-zero five-ten Baldridge Lane, Van Buren, Arkansas. Whereas the proposed zoning herein was recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission in accordance with ACA fourteen dash fifty-six dash four-twenty-two. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the above described property is hereby rezoned from C two to R three, and the Van Buren zoning map is amended to reflect this rezoning.
Do you have a motion to suspend the rules, go to a second reading? All those favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the title, ordinance by title for a second reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash one-nine-six-three, Van Buren Municipal Code number fourteen dot oh-four dot oh-one, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending the zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Do you have a motion to further suspend the rules, go to a third and final reading?
Motion.
All those favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number seven dash one-nine-six-three, Van Buren Municipal Code number fourteen dot oh-four dot oh-one, for the purpose of rezoning certain property in the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, amending the zoning map of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Mr. Hearst?
Yes, sir. This is, a few months ago, we rezoned contiguous properties to this property, this property owner, Mr. Hernandez, we weren't able to get that done back then, so we're taking care of that now, so this is all part of...
This was the, this was the property with the Hales, same as when the Hales came in with the, the individual next to the Hales, correct?
Oregon, Tim, Oregon. Oregon family.
So it's just that same grouping which should have been done, and so the same group? Motion to approve, is there a second?
Motion.
Who votes the motion?
All of them.
Okay.
All of them.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Eyes have it, vote is six-four-zero against, and that's ordinance number?
Two-nine dash two-zero-one-eight.
Next item on the agenda is an item, ordinance to amend the conditional use legend for hogs, goats, sheep, cattle, and horses.
We're going to look at the use.
Oh, my. Ask clerk please read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend ordinance number two-five dash one-nine-nine-seven, to reclassify hogs, goats, sheep, cattle, and horses as conditional uses in certain zones specified in the city of Van Buren permitted and conditional use legend, whereas the city adopted ordinance number two-five dash one-nine-nine-seven, to provide for regulations for the granting of conditional uses within established zones, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published, and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission on December fourth, two thousand and eighteen, to consider this proposal in writing, and whereas... And whereas the proposed change hearing was recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, ordinance number two five dash one nine nine seven shall be amended as follows. Section two, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision here is declared to be unconstitutional and inappropriate or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance. And to that extent, provisions heretofore are declared to be severable.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading? Is there a second?
No second.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a second reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two five dash one nine nine seven to reclassify hogs, goats, sheep, cattle, and horses as conditional uses in certain zones as specified in the city of Van Buren permitted and conditional use legend.
Do I have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
Motion.
Is there a second? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number two five dash one nine nine seven to reclassify hogs, goats, sheep, cattle, and horses as conditional uses in certain zones as specified in the city of Van Buren permitted and conditional use legend.
Okay, so let's get some background and then I'll ask Mr. Hurst, the city attorney, he'll talk a little bit about this. If you recall, several months ago, we had an individual that came to us. It was a reference to a pet pig. So we started having discussions about pet pigs and formed a working group to look at our ordinances regarding all animals, not just pet pigs, but they started with pet pigs. They moved forward with some changes having to do with pigs. We already had something in there, reference to sheep and goats, sheeps and goats, having to do with permitting process. So they're working under the same thing as the pigs. That was the idea that we began moving forward with. Then as discussions continued, looked at this entire section here. Joe, do you have anything to add with that?
This, we're just trying to streamline the process. There was an old permitting process that hasn't really been followed for years, and so this has made it easier. It allows for a public hearing process. We have a lot of neighbors complaining about certain things, and so this just kind of brings it, makes it transparent whenever this, someone desires to do this. And so that all the neighbors know what's going on. And really just, just cleans up an old ordinance, basically.
So it would be, it would be a public hearing, just like we do on any conditional use where neighbors could, it would be posted, neighbors could come in, they could make comments about someone wanting to have hogs, goats, sheeps, pigs, hog, whatever, correct?
Yes, yes, and that kind of puts it in hands of, rather than just an administrative function, would actually put in the planning commission's hands, you know, a review of it with, you know, a full opportunity for full disclosure and discussion, rather than just an administrative top function.
It'd be the same as other conditional uses? That'd be, it could be reviewed or will be reviewed on an annual basis? So if someone comes in and gets a conditional use for a pet pig or a pig, it'd be reviewed, is that correct?
It's not annual. It would be for each, like if the person moved, they would have to, and the owner would have to.
Goes to the owner.
Yeah.
The owner, okay.
So once you got approved for your pet pig, then you're permanently approved at that location for that big.
Well, it's not permanent. I mean, it's a conditional use, meaning there's conditions that are put on it. So if the rules haven't been followed, then that can be brought up back to the planning commission. Neighbors can come back and say, hey, look, it was supposed to be doing X, Y, Z. It hasn't followed the rules, so this, these conditions can be revisited. I mean, that's kind of the nature of conditional uses.
And then following the rules is just kind of a given, you should have to based on the condition. But as long as I follow the rules, I wouldn't have to come in periodically and get reapproved.
Right, and it gives a lot of latitude to look at a lot of different issues as opposed to just, you know, black and white, you know, coming in and have an administrator look at it, review it, and stamp it or not. So I think it gives a lot of opportunity for that.
You can just grow one end, I say it's one end, but the pig has pigs, does that cover subsequent pigs or?
Well, we've put in guidelines, they're gonna, the commission is gonna go by them. I think that's in the next ordinance, actually. The, um, the planning commission will be referencing the National Resource Conservation Service as a guide, so that will kind of give them direction as to how they're gonna address the individual situation.
Any other questions or comments?
We're gonna review this every year. Is that what we're saying?
We expect.
No, every, every owner.
Every owner.
Oh, okay.
Nobody inspected like everything else is inspected.
Every year.
So that would have come before. If there's a problem with it, it could come back to the planning commission or come back to the city council to say, this is not working the way it's supposed to do it. This is not the rules that they signed up for. And again, just like anything else, if the council at some point says, this is not working, we need to revisit it, you can always revisit the ordinance and change it. But I think it's just a start because as Joe said, right now, we are, we're, we have some antiquated rules that we need to update and get changed.
Motion to approve.
Have motion to approve. Is there a second? Second. Go ahead, call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Ayes have it. That is a vote of six, four, zero against. Do you have the ordinance number?
Three zero dash two zero one eight.
Ordinance number?
Three zero.
Three zero? Three zero dash two zero one eight. And then the next one is an ordinance amending municipal code six point zero eight regarding animals and fowl. And that's the quote. Please read that ordinance by title.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance to amend the Van Buren Municipal Code, chapter six point zero eight regarding animals and fowl inside the city limits. Whereas after a planning commission review of the requirements in the city of Van Buren Municipal Code, chapter six point zero eight regarding animals and fowl kept inside the city limits, there is a need for requiring conditional use permit for these purposes. And whereas a notice of a public hearing was duly published and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission to consider revisions thereto. And whereas the proposed amendments to the Van Buren Municipal Code herein were recommended by a unanimous vote of the entire planning commission. Now therefore be ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, section six, six dot oh eight dot oh one of the Van Buren Municipal Code shall be amended as follows. A, it shall be unlawful for any person to keep or maintain within the corporate limits of the city any cows and/or horses without a conditional use permit and as otherwise provided in this chapter. B, the Van Buren Planning Commission shall reference the Natural Resource Conservation Service as a guide when determining the appropriate size of land required for the animals to be kept. Section two, section six dot oh eight dot oh two of the Van Buren Municipal Code shall be amended as follows. A, it shall be unlawful for any person to keep any hogs, goats, or sheep within the city without a conditional use permit in an established dog yard and as provided in section B and as otherwise provided in this chapter. B, one, the Van Buren Planning Commission shall reference the Natural Resource Conservation Service as a guide when determining the appropriate size of land required for the animal to be kept. Two, all will be deleted. Three, all will remain. Four, all will remain. Five, all will be deleted. Section three, severability. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are repealed to the extent of the conflict. The provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if provisions shall for any reason be illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity as a reminder of this ordinance.
Okay, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading? Is there a second? All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a second reading.
An ordinance to amend the Van Buren Municipal Code, chapter six point oh eight regarding animals and fowl inside the city limits.
Do I have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading? Is there a second?
Second.
All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Ask clerk please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance to amend the Van Buren Municipal Code, chapter six point oh eight regarding animals and fowl inside the city limits.
City attorney, any comments on the changes here?
I think you can, if you compare this to the ordinance attached we have now in place, it references, you know, what actions we can take and amend it. It's not being properly maintained or providing conditions, so. And it also references the resource manual, like I said, with respect to how many. So I think that it gives them guidance and gives them some ability to look at several different factors in making that decision.
What about grandfathering in those that are already there? The process by which they have currently cows or horses in the city limits? How does this affect those, if any?
I think we determined at the planning commission meeting that would not be a grandfathering situation necessarily, because it could be a broader situation like for sheep or horses or whatever. You're allowed somebody per acre or whatever, so. That, I think that's what we talked about, was that it would be something where anyone would have to come for a conditional use.
So if they've got cows, horses now, then they're gonna have to come down and apply?
Yes.
And the Natural Resource Conservation Service, if it says it's okay to have four cows per the acre, then they can add more cows than they currently have?
David, I can't, I don't think he's actually looked at the manual, but it does, would give them a guideline to say whether this number that they have currently or anticipating having would be appropriate for the land use. So that's one of the things, is that we've got different areas in the city which people may or may not be really aware of that are appropriate for, and actually several places that already do have scenarios like this. But, so this would cover those areas where it really is appropriate without the cumbersome proceeding that we have in place that is not really being utilized.
So somebody's gonna have to go around and count the cows or horses and tell them to come in?
What are we doing here? Do we really want to discuss this?
Well, I think it gives control in a manner that we don't really have now.
So if we approve this now, we have more control than, than we did previously?
I believe so.
Okay.
To the extent that we're allowing the situation to occur in places that are appropriate within the city and under the guidelines that we feel are appropriate. As opposed to, basically, right now, it's just an administrative function, like wanting the city clerk to get a permit to operate a business in the city. Well, there's not really a determination of whether the business is appropriate. Whereas in this instance, that's what could be the same thing if you come in and say, I'm gonna put a horse here. They don't really have the opportunity to determine whether it's an appropriate location so long as the appropriate acreage is there. So it's really less, it gives it more of an opportunity to look at all the factors as opposed to just reverstamping this or saying no to this.
What do you think, David?
And this is what, to my knowledge, we've never used the old system. This will be a better system that we'll be able to use, and it will. I think the standard for, like, sheep is thirteen, fifteen per acre.
There's places where we have lots of cows, lots of fowl. Does that have anything to do with that, though? The ones that use the pond or the lake or?
So right now, those are under regulated, basically.
As in the geese that come in? They're on their own. If you wanna take care of them, people, yes.
I don't have a problem with what we're trying to do. My question for that originated from that. I'm just wondering, because we do have, how we're, how we're gonna go about getting the word out. Because I suspect, and maybe it was out there and everybody got to notice, but I suspect there probably wasn't a lot of contribution in the public meetings. A lot of folks didn't know, and so I'm just wondering how the first time the piggy police come by and say, let me see your permit.
I think the intent, and, and, city attorney, you can correct me if I'm wrong. No one's gonna go out, in my opinion, at least in a few months, no one's gonna say, okay, coenforcer, you go out and inspect everybody's farm. They might wanna do that. So we're gonna operate on complaints like we do most of the time. If there's a complaint from a neighbor, then we're gonna go and apply the new rules that are, that are passed. No one's gonna go out to people's properties and try to take their chickens or their cows or their horses. That's my opinion. I could be wrong, but that's the way I believe.
Which, which makes sense. Which makes sense. And to act on that might go out. I mean, while we started with the pig situation was they happen to see someone walking a pig or they're out in the yard that they're looking for.
And this is limited really to, you know, we're not getting into, we didn't change anything with the exotic animal portion of the ordinance. So it's really just animals that we really already have in the city limits. It gives us a little more latitude that they can control over it.
And at this point, it will be regulated by the planning commission or will initiate it, just like land use and everything with the planning commission.
Yes.
And then ultimately come to us.
Yes.
I think that's a real positive of having your body review it instead of just, um, just canvass it as to, you know, as administrative function. And I think the only, the only of these, the only ones that we've really, besides, you know, the one pig, which was a pet pig, but the only ones that we've ever gotten some complaints would be about fowls, chickens.
On, I've had one of the sheep.
Sheep.
The, the fowl are not included. They are still.
Yes, as they are. That's the only area that we've, we've gotten complaints about, or the chicken as well.
Right, you're right.
Any other questions, discussions? Motion to approve.
I'll make that.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
Go ahead, call your own, please.
Councilmember Sparkman?
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon?
Aye.
Councilmember Petty?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Swain?
Aye.
Councilmember Wood?
Aye.
Ayes have it. That is a vote of six, four, zero against, and that would be ordinance number?
Three one dash two zero one eight.
Ordinance three one dash two zero one eight. Next item on agenda are the financial reports. You have copies of those reports, but I ask the clerk please read the amount.
One million, one hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-one stamps.
A motion to approve the report.
Motion to approve.
A motion to pay this. Is there a second? Second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All who's got copies of the department reports. Any questions? Do we have a representative of the area agency on the agenda? A little stiff, that report. Wayfinding. Ask Joe, that's it, this report. Joe?
On your report, on the wayfinding, do you have an update on the wayfinding side?
Uh, yeah, they're doing production right now. Most of that money that's gonna pay for those is coming from the A and P commission. And right now, they're being manufactured in Wisconsin.
I signed a check on that Friday for the A and P commission.
So it's gonna be here soon. It's been a long process. It's been a long process.
So, it should be on the way, but just quickly.
Yeah, shouldn't be too long.
How many do you have on there?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? We need to get started now for the next fifteen?
Just about. The biggest issue has to do with approval from the highway department because the rules of the highway department, wherever you cannot put signage. For example, you cannot put signage coming off of an interstate because of easements and railways there. So, where you would think that you would wanna have the signage, the highway department will say, "You can't put signage there." So, you've gotta put it off the interstate. And once you start eliminating those spots, because there's a number of signs before that. So, it's, it's a good start. And you've gotta have a sign with a turn. You just can't have a sign with a straight ahead arrow. You've gotta have a turn on there somehow.
Okay. I know we have a number of citizens here. The one I do have listed on my agenda, and I'll give others opportunity to speak, but the one I do have listed is Stephanie Townsend.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Townsend. I live at eleven fourteen Sandstone Drive. I'm here to address the debris on my street and my neighborhood streets. Do you mind if I go ahead and pass around these pictures?
No, it's fine.
Thank you. Yes, I'm aware of the statement that the city of Vampirian will not be removing any construction debris. Yes, I do have insurance. I'm not here to address my own property. I'm here to make you aware of the safety hazards you are allowing on our streets and on our curbs. On the city of Vampirian's webpage or the street department, I found the quote, "Other overview, what should they do as a service for our city?" It says, "The city of Vampirian Street Department is dedicated to improving and maintaining Vampirian city streets and is always on standby to respond to hazardous weather conditions that may affect travel and safety within city limits." That's the quote I found on the webpage. So, I bring to you pictures when I found while walking my neighborhood for four hours on Saturday. In these pictures, you will find a light pole against the curb, shingles and boards with nails sticking out into the street and many other things. Tell me, do you think I can safely walk my dog or even take my child for a walk in my neighborhood? The definition of hazard is a danger or a risk, and I find this as a big hazard. The goal of the street department is to keep our city safe, isn't it? Let me just say, I do not feel safe traveling my streets by foot or by car. Because of the debris, people are stalking in front of my house and in front of my driveway to slow down and look for the pink pictures of the debris. I couldn't even pull into my driveway, this is just last Wednesday evening, I couldn't even pull into my driveway until I had to motion to the man to move while there are three cars behind him. I live just two houses down from two of the houses that were completely destroyed. Tell me, how are you making me feel safe within these city limits? My child, in my neighborhood, we were just sitting there yesterday talking, and we were just next to about pile of debris, and my child dropped something, and my neighbor almost stepped into a sharp object. So, how is it safe for my neighbors? How is it safe for my child? Had it been my child, I would've been extremely upset. Let me tell you how much I've heard from my community. I watched four hours, and again, I repeat that, four hours on Saturday, talking to my fellow neighbors about the debris not being removed. Have any of you done that to check on your fellow neighbors and citizens of Vampirian? Why should we have our insurance companies or even when we pay out of pocket for someone else's debris through being removed? What do we pay our city workers for? Why are the cities back to not being put to use? And why has the street sweepper not been sent to our area? Why is it that nonprofits, religious groups, and military have been the most helpful in offering assistance, but our own tax dollars aren't being put to work? How can a small town like Mountainburg recover as quickly as they did after their tornado? The city of Mountainburg did not receive the same as we. However, the governor of Arkansas gave them a hundred thousand dollars. Governor Enes Hedgeson's spokesperson, J.R. Davis, said officials in Crawford County or any of the city, other cities hit in the tornado event would have to make a request and they hope to receive assistance like they did in April. J.R. Davis also said they would for sure review the request. So, I asked, "Has a request been made to the governor?" Every day I fall into my neighborhood from my full-time job and the same as my husband's, and we are devastated all over again. How do I raise my child and community who would not support us after a disaster such as this tornado? I talk to mothers on Saturday, I talk to elderly individuals, and I talk to those who work full-time jobs and don't have time to worry about debris because they're struggling to get their house back in order. Dogs are without fences, houses are without roofs, and further flooding has occurred from a recent storm on Friday. How can you say your hands are full when they know aren't even dirty? We aren't asking to rebuild our neighborhood. We have enough good people do that ourselves. We're asking you to bring, uh, help us with the tragedy and our healing process by removing the debris. If you can't do it for that, at least do it for the safety of our community, especially our children, as you have said on the street department's overview. I know you have not personally been living this hell, but just know that if you were, I would be here supporting you every step of the way. Here I have my neighbors, and I thank them for my support, and I care for you even if I don't know you. So, city council, I just want you to do the same for us. If we were your friends or your loved ones, wouldn't you want the best for us and wouldn't you expect more from your city? I know this is just a small step, but I hope to get something out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll speak personally, not on behalf of the city here. I have been over there. We had employee that was hit, and anytime you have a, you know, an accident or something like this, natural disasters is difficult, and your life is turned upside down. We were part of the ninety-six tornado, so I, personally, I think we, I think we can all say that we, as a community, you know, we feel when we, with our neighbors and whether they're our direct neighbor or our, you know, neighbor across the interstate are affected. It's a difficult situation, and I don't know where the hundred and something lanes are as far as the insurance companies are. I don't know how to, to do that. I know what we did in our case of our employee, we, the employer, helped, got him some, some, uh, quick relief from the, the need for subs for roofing and stuff, and we did what we could. I don't know from a, you know, legal or otherwise, I know there's probably some, some issues with legalities on what the city can and can't do, but I, I, I don't know personally other than to just say, you know, press those insurance agents and those adjusters because if you don't, they're gonna, you know, they're gonna use everything that they have to do their job, which is not always to your best advantage. So, make sure you work with the adjusters in that regard. But, I don't know what else we can do as a city. I mean, I'm looking at the rest of the table here, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
I drove through there also on Sunday. In fact, I went through the barricades to take a look at everything, and I know it was devastating for many of you. Then I sat in on a meeting here on Monday morning, following the tornado with the emergency management director of Crawford County. He got a call from Judge Gilstrap at that time. Judge Gilstrap had called the governor's office, and the governor's office indicated that they could probably help financially, and I haven't heard anything since then, have you?
Now, we, yes, we have talked to the governor's office, and our conversation with them, they could make no commitment, but we explained what our, what the plan was to push the private sector, which would be the insurance companies, to do what the private sector is supposed to do and what you're paying your insurance premiums for, which is to, for debris removal of the mass debris. And they're in agreement that the private sector should step up with the insurance companies. We've also talked to agents. We sent out the release on that Monday to the insurance companies, and we have not gotten any feedback back that for individuals who have insurance, and our listing that we got from the door to door from emergency management, I could only see one on there who even didn't have insurance. What was to push them to get the debris cleaned up, and as the, as Aldman Petty said, that's gonna take time to do. We did have our guys out that day when we met after that, because we met with state officials on Saturday after the, the event. And we had our guys out working, cleaning up all as much as they could with the trees and vegetation. So, like in Ms. Townsend case, I believe you contacted your insurance agent. They have a dumpster on the way or they will provide a dumpster?
Our, they, what my, 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 I'm not issuing, I'm not here to address my property. I handle my property. My problem is that debris was on the road. Everyone that took that debris off the road put it on our curbs. And in, in that event now, those curbs are not safe. The streets are not safe.
No, okay, I understand, I understand that part, but in your case, you did contact your insurance company?
Yes.
And they, they said they would, or they did provide a dumpster, so they would provide a dumpster for your debris?
For that, for debris off of my house.
For your house, correct.
I have a question on, on that, like, so, next step, because I lived on Mountain Edge up until a few years ago. I mean, you guys are my neighbors, and I've known Jared since nineteen eighty-five. I mean, you are my friends. You, I, I totally understand this. This is, this is my neighborhood as well. Once those dumpsters are there, are there any kind of, how do you get stuff in the dumpsters? Is that part of the insurance program?
There are, there is. I'm five, almost five foot seven, and I know that there are stacks of debris with nails in them, metal, everything. Everyone's just throwing stuff up on the curbs, and those are taller than me. Those pictures, it's not because I'm just zooming in.
I drove through again today. I know, I mean, it, it looks, it looks bad.
It's horrible.
Organized, it's like organized chaos now, right? Because it's been stacked up and...
Yes.
You can tell people made a ton of effort toward that.
It's just really disappointing, and I feel like there's definitely more for my neighborhood.
Are there any of your neighbors here that have filed a claim with their insurance company that has refused to clean up the debris?
How many are here, Dan?
Has anybody gotten a plan of what they plan on doing to clean it up other than just providing a dumpster? Like, is there a next step past the dumpster? Does anybody know that?
I don't know. We've been told that we'll be provided a twenty-yard dumpster, which is not very large, and I don't think we'll fit all the debris in our yard.
No.
So, I don't know what the next step to get all the debris, you know, it's probably gonna be a fight with insurance.
Right, some of these are large portions of buildings, right?
And the debris in my yard is not my house either, you know, it's blown from other, other directions.
Well, let's see how these people out.
Can I ask you a question? The pictures were taken one day?
Those were taken on Saturday and Sunday.
This is two days?
Those are two weeks after.
Two weeks after, okay. I was there the day of the tornado, and we had so many volunteers. Are you still, you seeing that volunteer power?
Saturday, I saw a young woman and a young gentleman. They were walking from the end of Sandstone to the other end of Sandstone, and I stopped and asked her what organization she was with. She was actually there providing, or working her service hours, and the officer had just dropped her off, told her to walk from one end of Sandstone to the other to pick her up there, and they just only left Richmond. They were not instructed to go anywhere on any other or surrounding streets. Only one end of Sandstone to the other. And I asked her what they were picking up, because she only had one trash bag, and she said, "It's only what I can pick up with my plan."
Just in my experience of cleaning up in Moore, I made four visits to Moore the first time, chance they could get there. Then the following visits, we kinda went to the outer communities, and the outer communities were struggling with what you're experiencing. Is they were given a dumpster, but no means to put the stuff in the dumpster. And so, they had volunteers, well, at the time, ServPro was there, and there were several organizations that were there, large groups, and then our church just happened to bring a Bobcat. And I can't tell you how much just one Bobcat will do for an entire street. It'll get that stuff in that dumpster, and it's ready to be hauled off, which the insurance company should be holding off.
Just from three neighbors, they picked, they all pitched in because they're also arguing with their insurance companies on what they can move, and they had bought one dumpster, and by the time I walked up to their door, there, another dumpster was coming back. And there were, all three neighbors were going in and picking it up, and they were splitting the cost between the three of them. Now, it could've easily been sixteen hundred dollars, and he said he didn't know at that time because it was their second load.
As far as one of the safety issues I want you to be aware of too, is we spent two days cleaning up properties that were already cleared. Cleared meaning all the debris was gone, but we were right on the sidewalks where the, where the kids might be, near the edge of the driveways, and we were finding nails, roofing nails, just assorted sharp objects, and that was our job, to just clean up glass and assorted stuff. And that was all volunteer work, and, and that's gonna be something that you're gonna have to look out for, for safety issues. I, I, just strongly, we just need more volunteers.
I appreciate Jared and Lori, Black, their church, Vampirian First Assembly, they came out and brought how many people forward?
Fifty or sixty.
Yeah, and also, he being, being very beautiful, went on pocket, and then they came out, and also Andrew, our neighborhood's house was completely destroyed. His military battalion actually came out and was offering assistance with their day.
It's, I'm just saying, it's gonna require more volunteers, like church group and our community, because that's what makes us, we're really a strong community in that respect.
Would, I want, I want you to clarify for me, when you said that they were, they were having an argument, I'll say argument, what are your words were with the insurance company about what could go, explain that, what you're, what you're saying.
From talking to that, Jolene, he was wanting to go back with his insurance company to clarify if he could use the dumpster for the debris that was not his because it was actually from someone else's house. It wasn't actually his.
I'm not an attorney, but it's...
And that's what our insurance companies are.
At some point, it, I think it just is an argument with your insurance company. I mean, it affects your property. I mean, what if it was your neighbor's roof into your roof? I mean, so, I obviously don't know the facts or anything, but it, insurance, have the adjusters been to the neighborhood? I mean, has everybody had an adjuster that, just generally speaking?
This gentleman here is shaking his head, yes. Did your insurance company tell you that they haven't cleaned it?
Yeah, I've got five acres of debris, like, I mean, I pulled off nineteen hundred and forty pounds twice, okay, two tons, and I have heavy equipment. I got a whole four hundred dollars, which I thought I had good insurance, our bureau, but, but that's all the allowance there is. And then on our trees is a five...
That's all he allows for debris removal, period? Four hundred dollars?
Period, period. And then we have twenty-one trees that are a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty feet tall, and they allow five hundred acres for that removal. Five hundred dollars, I'm sorry. Towed. So, I got nine hundred dollars, and like I say, I've got the equipment to do it with, but there's no way that you can clean your property on that kind of money. There's just no way. So, drive to our, our areas, that, it is what it is, and there's nobody coming, and I think the public feels like they thought maybe someone would come by and help with that or assist with it, but it's not happening. So, I've been working twelve, fourteen hours a day trying to clean up five acres, and I haven't put a dent in it.
It's ours and the neighborhood's.
And people from other neighborhoods are in my pasture, which I'm cleaning it up slowly but surely, don't want the code enforcer out, but it's just very difficult to do on that minimum, you know, four hundred dollars, how do you do that if you don't have heavy duty equipment? I... on that minimum, you know, $400, how do you do that if you don't have heavy duty equipment? I, I feel, I, we have shared frustrations, I might say. But the insurance companies, they don't pay. That's the bottom line. And I says, well, you know, y'all come out and help me and they're like, this is it. This is your $400, this is your $500 and that's it. So it's difficult.
I, I'm, I have an insurance policy since I've worked for Shake Farm for Randy Little in Fort Smith for 13 years. Debris removal is if it is on a covered item. So if the tree falls on the house, they will cut the tree and get the tree off the house, but they will not haul off the debris. Debris removal, they're, they are not going to haul off someone else's garage door. That, they just will not pay for that. That is not, the garage door, the fences or whatever laying on the ground, laying on the yard are not a covered item of debris removal. That's just not there. That's not written into the Arkansas State Insurance Policy. It is on a covered item. So if the tree is on the house, they will pay to have it cut and moved off, but they will not haul it off.
The tree?
The tree, or fence, or-
Yeah, we, we can haul off the tree because we have someplace easy to go with. All of the debris, this is another piece of it, is that all of the debris has to go to a Class 1 landfill. It's not as if the debris can be hauled to the county. I'm just saying it's another, just one pieces of the obstacle is it's all going to be hauled to the Fort Smith landfill. So whatever route is taken, any cleanup is going to take months to do simply because of turnaround time. Because you cannot take it, move, we were asked on Saturday when that was state officials about moving to a, moving into a central location. You can't, you can't do that. You can't be permitted to a central location. And I think that's where a little bit of the confusion happens, is that they go back to being under disaster. When, when you're under a state disaster, then rules change all of a sudden. But we're not under any sort of state or federal disaster just because of the size. Crawford County was the only place that was hit. So everything on that regard has to be to, to the landfill. And yet, my point from that is, once you, once we start doing it, it's going to take, so even if, even if, even if the council directs to do it, it's going to take a long time to do it. It's not going to happen overnight because we don't have the resources to do it. And if we were, and my recommendation is if, as we move along, as that happens, it's going to be to the next administration, that you don't try to do it internally. Otherwise, you're not going to get anything else done in the community because every person and every piece of equipment is going to be in that one neighborhood. There's debris that's sitting there now that you could theoretically move out of there, but give it two weeks and there's going to be more that's going to be coming out. And that's just, that's just the way it is. So if it's going to happen and if, if you move forward of cleanup, then it's going to have to be done, I, I recommend it be done contracted. But that's why we need to push to the insurance companies to get dumpsters and, and if they need help filling them up, then, and, and if, and because we're not under disaster, then everything's going to have to be bid.
Well, the city, I'm sorry, the city at Mountain Edge, actually their tornado occurred Friday evening and they had everything cleaned up by Tuesday by midnight because the city had contracted someone else.
And I will disagree with you because I've got an article here from the Southwest Times' Record, two months after the disaster, and they're talking about the problems with cleaning debris and they think you haven't had the debris cleaned up yet. That's two months afterwards. So it's, it, it didn't happen that quickly.
No, we didn't finish cleaning up until about October. It, it, we got all of our tree stumps, but we immediately got our money too from the government.
All right, so who's following up with the governor's office? I mean, just because we have a-
We can follow up with the governor's office and they're going to want to know what cost of cleanup.
Okay, so who's that?
We need to bid it. If, if you want to move, if you want to move forward to do it, and I'm looking at the next mayor back there, it's going to have to be bid and how you bid it for that.
I think we, I mean, kind of when you sign up to run for public offices to take care of this, which we're, which we are trying to do, I'm not saying that's not being done, but I would like to, if there is money available from the governor's office, take every shot at getting that.
I agree with that. Officially, I guess I don't really have an opinion because I'm not the mayor yet. I do want to say, I mean, I was there the night of the tornado and we were helping, we were there with the police chief and the fire chief and David and many others. It was horrible and I never expected, based on the weather that I watched, I never expected to see what we saw. Some work has been done, Wayne was there that night as well, he came and they cleaned as much as they could that night. I want to do what we can to help, absolutely, I understand, trying to get the insurance is difficult. But as Tyler was asking a question, we've got to figure out costs. And if we want the governor's office, which I talked to specifically and they said they cannot guarantee anything. So we were basically denied, but they said, well, maybe. So we've got to come up with a number somehow. And I'm not exactly sure how we do that. I'm willing to ask and try to figure that out because I want to help as well.
To the lady, and I apologize, I don't remember your name, but State Farm. Are there not other areas within policy, extra expense? Because I understand the debris removal for a tree, but if, if the tree is a car or the tree-
So let's say your garage door is damaged and going to have to be repaired. Let's just use that brand. So then you call in a garage door company to say, I'm getting a new garage, State Farm is buying me a new garage door. I need this one taken down and put a new one up. So then they will allow that for a removal of their garage door. However, if Larry is already getting a new garage door, but he has this spare garage door laying there, then they're not going to haul off two old garage doors and replace one.
No, I get that.
In other words, if your neighbor's garage door blows in there?
Well, they don't, I'm not sure they know which garage door, carport, it's a-
Yeah, if it's a, if a, if a fire occurs and, and part of it was still, there's demo cost in a build back.
Right, but the contractor factors that in.
And that's where I'm headed, is the, the claim total, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not an insurance agent, but the claim total should cover the demo as well as the build back and the additional-
That could be for, for say Larry, Larry ended up, Larry and Stephanie ended up very, very lightly damaged, but say their next door neighbor who everyone has piled their stuff in their yard, that's not going to work. You know, because they live at the, say at the corner, so everyone, Larry's fence is over there and probably the house that was destroyed, the part of their fence is over there. And to say when they figure their estimate for $5,000 for a new privacy fence, so $5,000 for the fence and we're going to give you what it would cost you to remove that, so $1,000. Well, they've got $8,000 worth of debris removal because everybody's fence is in their yard.
Did they freely allow those people to put their debris in their yard?
No.
You're just kind of cored to the curb.
Just to get it down the road.
Are there any options for joint ventures? The insurance company does this, we get a big volunteer day to come out and help pick up and then heavy machinery could be used for the big stuff. You know what I mean? Like, is anything that where, we get contributions from all parts, but at least do something.
Is there, is there a way we can meet? I, I don't know what we can solve tonight personally, I'll leave that to the mayor. But, I mean, I would love to be able to ask those questions all over the wood and just get insurance agents, get different volunteer organizations. We've had people call and so I've had text messages from random people, hey, I want to help. Well, I don't know how to tell them where to help, you know, go to this house. I, I don't know, I know some churches don't know.
Sure, we need to work that out, yeah.
But it'd be great to organize something.
Maybe third key family, you're saying?
You've got trees, Joe, I said, you've got trees big around, about 10 times as big as you are bodywide. And you've got people out there, there's mothers, there's older people that has got no equipment that can do that. You know, these people have paid city taxes and I feel like the city needs to help them. Why doesn't the city help them in 1996? Am I not wrong?
Well, I think the city's wanting to help and I think that's what we're all talking about right now. So I, I mean, I think part of the problem is that, you know, there are, there are private payments for insurance that do need to be addressed first before we're using public funds for something that should, has already been public, privately paid. And I think that is the issue the mayor is trying to, to make with the insurance companies is, hey, we've paid you good dollars, do what you're supposed to do. And I think that's what he's trying to ensure is done before we put public funds in the mix. But I think everyone, we're a volunteer community of the year, what, 19 of the last 20 years? I know there's organizations that will want to help. I know Women's League just voted over, you know, at the Women's League Christmas Party to donate a large amount of money to a particular family that was stricken by the event. So I know there's community organizations out there and so perhaps we just need a figurehead to do that. And I think that was really well spoken.
This stuff has been laying on the ground for two weeks and it's going to become a health hazard. There's children out there, we're going to wait till one of them gets hurt.
Well, I think that's, the whole point here is that we're trying to come together and figure out a way to do that.
Well, you can talk and talk, but they, you know, these people-
Candace is, and Candace is absolutely right, is that caution is that we want to push the private sector to do what the private sector's been paid and supposed to do. There's a tendency to want the public sector to jump in and, and do it and then the private sector says, I'm backing off because the government's taking care of it. And we've got to find where that, where that piece is that we can go in and say, we want you to do your job. That's what you've been paid to do, is to do your job. And if we, and somebody brings up elderly or single moms, it, that's, that's a, that's a great blanket, but give us specific names and we can get volunteers to help. We have churches and nonprofits, so thank goodness that we do. You talked about them being out there, thank goodness we have these, these individuals are out there. But as far as, I really believe that we, we need to contract if you're going to do it. Joe, if you want to try to set, and talk about setting up a meeting and getting together?
No.
Go.
We can work into it.
We can contact the, the governor's office, but they're going to ask how much? And once, once you jump into it and take it, the answer from private sector is, it's yours.
Can we at least do this? Can we at least, since everybody's here, can we circle a cal, a date on the calendar today so you guys will know and, you know, I'm in and out of town and I know people travel in and out of town, it's holidays, but if we can pick a date that works for, for Joe and, and as many people as possible, that way we at least have that and, and I'll do my best to be here and I'll have, you know, an insurance adjuster representative that I know here or, I mean, something, just so we don't just say we'll agree to a meet and then, you know, it's January 17th before we meet.
Do you have to wait then or can, if there's names, do they not turn in the names of people that need help now? Could they do that?
Leave your contact information, maybe easier because we, depending on how many council members are here, we have to have a public meeting, we have to post it, we have to put in a newspaper, it's got to be in there two weeks. We have a lot of steps that have to follow. But I think at least we need to, we need to leave contact information. We need to get everybody's contact information this year.
Contact your legislators too. I mean, it's not just the city council members that play a role here. I mean, it's too much pressure put on the governor's office as, as possible, would probably facilitate getting some of those-
And I think the governor's, I think the governor's office is, will help, but it's the same, their same, their same approach is, before we come to the governor's office and start spending public funds all of a sudden, let's make sure that the private sector, the insurance companies are doing what they are supposed to do. And if it's in the, if it's an issue with the policy and it says, someone says, look, here's what my insurance company says, they said they're going to do $900, I can't do this for $900, then you're right. It's $900 and, and there needs to be help. But to an insurance company says, we're just going to blow it off, we don't want it, you're not asking, we're not going to help.
Trust me, I've-
No, I know you have.
I communicated, thank you.
I know you have. I know you have.
I'm good, it's just that it really helps. And that's where you're going to get your number, is once everybody's contacted their, their insurance company, got what debris they can't get rid of, or what they're giving money to, usually 5% to 10% of your, your claim, then, then anything that you need help with is where you get your numbers. You can give it to the governor and we'll have to round off dates, but if you don't have that information, and there's, there's more of you than just you guys who showed up.
Right, so is there a point person, is there, or a group, additional, if there was one or two or three points of contact versus 50, that would make it much easier? I know you guys probably don't have like an association or anything like that, I don't think, but is there a way that, that we could maybe form that among all the residents that are affected and that way those numbers could be turned in, you know, to the mayor's office, but then the communication could go back to be disseminated by the group? I mean, that would get things moving a lot faster and hopefully get us more accurate information because we don't leave anybody out.
Kind of list of people could be given to different community organizations so not just the city can, you know, be, we can get everybody knowing. I think a lot of people feel like, you know, they don't know who to help or how to help because-
The better we, the better organized we can get, the more help we're going to get. I know that, because I've, I've had a lot of people asking how to help.
So like before we leave this room, is there any way we can establish a point person or two and that person gets everybody's info, that person's info gets to everybody here so they can then contact that person? Could we do that before we leave, just so we don't leave here scattered?
I, I understand where you're headed and I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's probably efficient, but I think that's asking an awful lot of someone that's already in the middle of a disaster to, to be the point person for 150 people or 30 people.
Okay, so what do we do then?
I would rather have a public meeting and if we have to publish it tomorrow and we, we do that, that way people can gather their insurance policies or whatever. I, I just think that that's going to be more productive, at least initially.
Can they not send the information?
But here's the problem, here's the problem that I know that, that's going to come up. Some of your neighbors are going to take the insurance and they're going to leave town. They're not going to rebuild and the city's going to be stuck with condemning it, going through the process and it's going to sit there without a roof for months because of the, the public policies that we have, you know, laws in place to, that protect us. Or the, they're not going to have enough money on their policy to completely repair the roof and so they're going to take that debris removal so they're not out of pocket. So there's just a lot of issues that I'd like for us to, to talk about and if I was Candace, I'd have her partners here and she might be able to get some legal insight for, for some of the policies, but, but I'm not volunteering.
I'm glad.
But anyway, I, I just think we're, we're going to be better off if we do a, a public meeting and then we can invite community leaders, nonprofits, and we just, we have to do it at the school or wherever? I mean, let's just, let's just, I think that would be more productive. And I know it's a busy time of year, but these people are without a home at this Christmas time, it's holiday season and, and so I, I would feel better about that.
Contact information can also be sent into the web, city's website?
Info@bamboorincity.org.
So do we have enough, if you have not signed up, if you didn't sign up when you came in, please take the time to sign up.
Legibly, please, put your address and your name where we can read it.
Or, or send it into the-
And phone number.
Info number.
Or call the office, they'll write it down.
We'll set up a, set up a date.
We can coordinate getting empty dumpsters out there from the insurance companies. I think we can get plenty of volunteers to come with dumpsters up.
Yeah.
Do you know how many different insurance companies are represented, State Farm, not just by people represented, but your insurance company also? How many different policy, different companies?
Our bureau.
From here, State Farm.
I think there's two or three. I think there's two or three American National.
American National Shelter.
American National.
Just a few. Contact those people directly. Because they're going to want a public interest that looks good. Waste removal, yard waste, that's, that's a great program there to have that.
And that's, that's much easier to do because it's, it's easier to haul to. It's this, it's this turnaround to the, to the landfill that's just going to, again, whatever happens, it's going to take a long time to do it because of turnaround difficulty.
And the insurance company doesn't value trees.
And I'm not, and I'm really not sure what's going to happen because we have debris that's mixed debris of vegetation with construction material and I'm not sure when it gets over. And we can find out when it gets over what the, what the separation rules are. Okay, any, anything else? Anybody else? Well, thank you for being here. We'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Jennifer Hallam from the area agency, she got agents. She didn't want us to wait another month to hear her report, so she showed up.
You want to give us your report?
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right. Well, thank you so much for allowing me to come today. I'm Jennifer Hallam. I'm an area agency on AEGI. And last year, we came and asked you all to allocate money for our in-home assistance program, which we have done. That was $6,000 last year and I believe that it has possibly been approved for this year as well. But I want you to know, the type of things that we are able to do is to assist people, kind of those that fall through the gaps so that they can stay in their homes a little bit longer and they possibly do not qualify for Medicaid yet. Maybe they're waiting for the process. Right now in Arkansas, there's 10,000 people a day turning 65. Many of those are people in this area and they're waiting to get on Medicaid. So sometimes they need assistance with things to stay in their homes such as dentures, maybe pharmacy items, different things like that. So I'm just here today to thank you for the about 100 people that we've been able to help this year because of what you gave to us. And so anyway, thank you. You have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody else? Question two.
Question two.
All the papers that I've sent out?
Aye.